Hello everyone, welcome to another edition of the Fireside Charts. My name is Fred Kojichomeh and I'm very excited to have with me today, Councilman Pious Ali from Portland Maine. If you're joining us, welcome again. Again, we are live on Facebook. You can stream, we've put a link on Instagram as well. If you join us from Instagram, just grab the link and join us through Facebook. Before we start, I'm gonna show a short video of Councilman Ali and then we will be getting started right after that. So please stay tuned.
My name is Pious Ali and I'm Portland City Councilor. Maine is not my home by birth, but it is my chosen home. Maine is more than just a beautiful place to live. More than anything, Maine is its people. People who are kind, friendly, open-minded and open-hearted. Maine's people hold strong values of welcoming, accepting and celebrating each other. And we work to live into those values more and more. Maine is are creative, industrious, curious and compassionate. And we know that loving our state doesn't mean that there isn't room for improvement. By being civilly engaged, we have the power to lift up the place and the people that we love. It starts with voting, but it doesn't stop there. The PTA, the Neighborhood Association, the school board, the city council, the state legislature. There are countless ways to participate in the decision-making that affect our communities, our families, our youth. If you love Maine, the best way to live into that love is to get engaged, to vote.
Thank you, Councilman. That was a very good video. I like the way you walk at the end, in your white mufti, how you walk down the hall. That was a very swaggy walk. Yes, that was very nice. But again, welcome Councilman Pious Ali to the Fireside Charts. I want us to begin by you telling us about yourself, your background. What brought you here to the United States? Where did you come from? Where did you grow up in Ghana?
Well, thank you very much for having me. I have something that I drew any time I have an opportunity to be on a big platform like yours, which is that to share my gratitude first to you for hosting me and also to all those, which I mean by all those, I mean African-Americans who shared their blood and life for me to be in this country. I am grateful for that. If not for them, I would not be here. So I'm grateful for all the sacrifice that was done and I stand on their shoulders. So I was born in Accra actually, Mima precisely. And then I was raised, some of you may know, in the Ghanaian tradition, grandparents raise their grandchildren. So I was raised by my grandmother and my grandfather in a small town which is outside Accra. It's between Accra and the eastern region, but it's between Accra and the eastern region called Nsawo. So until when I was in middle school, when I was about to go to high school, which we call secondary school, my grandmother moved to Accra and lived at Zongoli, right in the middle of downtown Accra. So went to high school there, I went to West Africa Secondary School. And then after that, I did some work as a newspaper journalist or newspaper photographer. I worked for the Mirror, Graphic, I was mostly freelancing. We started a newspaper called PNP. I worked for the Radio and TV Times. I started that with a couple of people. I'm not the person who started, but I'm one of the first people who worked on it. I had an opportunity to come to the US. When I talked to kids, I joked that I photographed everyone in Ghana, from Percy to the president. And I was looking for more people to photograph. So I came to New York, because there's no any other place to go when you are looking for people to photograph more than New York. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to go back to photography when I came to New York. I lived in New York for two years and then I moved to Maine. How did I move to Maine? I have a friend, we grew up together back home, we were friends back home. And one day, I went to a mutual friend's home in New York and he was sitting there. When we were home, I knew that he went to school in Italy. Then I saw him sitting there, I'm like, "What are you doing here? How come I didn't know that you are visiting?" And the mutual friend said, "Oh, this guy, he comes here every day." And I said, "Really?" "Yeah." And I said, "He flies from Europe to come and visit you? Are you paying him to do that?" And they said, "No, he lives in Maine." And actually, I didn't even know that there was a state called Maine. And I asked where is Maine? And everyone started laughing at me. They look at my friend and say, "Hey, you see, that is why we say you should move back to New York." Long story short, I came to visit because he was able to sell the idea of Portland Maine as being this place that is beautiful, welcoming, friendly. He was able to sell that idea to me. And I said, "Okay, I will come and visit." So I came and visited him. And a couple of times after visiting, a couple of times, I decided to move here.
Wow.
2000.
Okay, so you moved from New York City to Maine. That's quite a move. Because I've been to Maine a few times and it's not the most diverse of cities. Coming from New York to Maine must have been quite a move. But you seem to have fit in very well. Looking at everything that you've done over the years, you seem to be in your comfort zone in Maine. Can you tell us why? Why do you feel so at home?
So when I first moved here, that was in 2002. So I couldn't get into the first job, the job that I really love, which is doing photography. I had a job with, I worked in restaurants. I did all sorts of menial jobs. And Maine, yes, Maine is one of the most white states in the Union. However, Portland, the city that I lived in at that time, was the most diverse city in the state. Now, we have other, more immigrants from Africa and other parts of the world coming here and they go over to the nearby towns. So we have some sort of diversity all over the place.
That's good.
When I came here in 2002, there were still a lot of immigrants here. There were Somalis and there were Sudanese at that time. And then you have a little bit of other immigrants, but not that many here in Portland. Across the state, you have people from the Latinx community who are all the way up north doing most of the farm work. And then you have some Asians who are here doing IT jobs, but they are brought here as expatriates. So why did I feel comfortable being here? One of the things that I did here, I built a community around myself. There are no Ghanis here, so those are a few Ghanis who are watching. Absolutely no Ghanis, there was my friend and a few other friends. We know all the Ghanis, we know ourselves. We are less than 10 families from Ghana.
Wow.
What I did was my first actual job outside the restaurant was me working with after-school program, where I worked with young people in four different neighborhoods. The program is called Peer Leader. It's an after-school program where we get young people to come in. The little ones will do their homework and then the old ones will do projects. And we were rotated from one neighborhood to another. I was a site coordinator for one neighborhood. But within the week, I would do like two days here and then I would do a single day at one of the other neighborhoods. And in the process of doing that, I did something unique. When I started working with a young person, I make it a point to go to their home and meet with their family and say that, "My name is Sosia and so, and I work with your child." By doing that, I started to build a community around myself. I happen to be a Muslim, so I go to the mosque and I got to build relationship with the Somali community. And because of working with young people, I got to build relationship with the southern Sudanese community, who are the largest, and then everyone else in between. I was going person, I jumped into the city that I found myself, which I believe was ready to embrace anyone who is willing to embrace it. And I got myself in so many things. I volunteered, I volunteered working with young people who are incarcerated. I volunteered working during anything. All I need to do is, I live right in downtown. So when there's an event going on, they're looking for volunteers, I would take these young people who are not using, and I would bring them right in the middle of downtown for them to volunteer at events that is being organized by mainstream organizations. And I will go to schools and speak to kids, not just in my city, but across the state. I created an organization called Maine Interfaith Youth Alliance, where I bring Muslim, Jew and Christian young people. I get them to sit and talk to each other, so that they will get to know one another. Not around faith, but around what I call humanity. I got young people to do volunteer work. And so by doing that, I extended my network of, I built a larger community around myself.
Excellent. That's great. I must say that you exude a level of confidence that I admire very much. Over the time that I've known you, I've just seen that about you, that the level of confidence that you exude is really admirable and it's something that you should continue. And the fact that you work with the youth, I'm sure they're learning a lot from you. So thank you for doing that. My next question for you is, I know you worked in Ghana, you worked as a photojournalist in Ghana. So you met a lot of politicians and a lot of big people. Was there anyone in particular that inspired you to one day even get into politics?
So I think my getting into politics was accidental completely. I never thought I would run for office. But if I look back in Ghana, who inspired me? I would say I grew up in the days of J.J. Rollins. And I also happen to be an Africanist. I think if I look behind, if I look at my back in Ghana and across Africa, I will look at people like Rollins, people like Samura Michelle, people like this guy from Sankara. Yeah, people like Okuruma and many others across the motherland. I admire their courage, their ability to speak truth to power and their ability to stand for what they believe in.
Okay.
How did I got into politics? In one of the many jobs that I've had, I used to work with a program, which actually is still the job that I have, where we are engaging families who historically do not engage the schools that their kids go to. And then one day, one of my colleagues at work called me and said, "Hey, listen, there is an opening with the school board. There are two seats and there are six people running. I think you should run for one of those seats." And I said to her that, "I'm not interested." She said, "Why?" And I said, "I'm not interested in politics." At that point, I've done some work of the NWSCP. I have organized different rallies when there's a situation to organize a rally or protest. I've done all of that. And I've worked with young people to push back on the system. I've gone to school board meetings a couple of times to represent some kids. So she said, "Well, you may not be interested in politics since I've known you. Everything that you have done is politics." And I said to her, and I still remember that conversation, that I'm not interested in organized politics. Then she said, "Why don't you go out and find someone who will be interested to run for this school board seat?" And I said, "Yeah, sure." And I tried. Nobody was interested. And I went back to work the following week and I said to my boss that that woman that we used to work with here, she said, "Yeah, and she's been bugging me the past few weeks that I should run for school board." And then my boss said, "And?" "I'm not interested." And my boss was like, "Well, I agree with her. If there's anybody in this city that I think should run for school board because of what you do with young people and their families, I think it is you."
Great.
So I went to City Hall and I said, "I'm interested in running for school board." And they gave me the paperwork. And I said, "If I change my mind..." They said, "No, you haven't done anything. Just go. If you don't want to do it later, I'll bring the papers back. You're not going to be held accountable or anything." I said, "Yeah, sure." Change my mind was when I started asking people for signatures. My seat was at large, so I was supposed to collect between 350 and 500 signatures. In the process of doing that, I had a lot of feedback from the people in the city. Everybody was telling me that, "Oh my goodness, we are happy that you are doing this." People encouraged me, people, it was fun. Then I said, "Oh my goodness, I'm gonna do this." So that's how I get into politics.
Wow. It's interesting how the world works. Somehow you came to Maine and the world just kind of opened up to you. That's an amazing story. So you are the first African-born Muslim, Muslim-American to be precise, to be elected not only in Portland, but in the state of Maine. The first African-born Muslim. My question is in two parts. How does that make you feel? And the second one is, considering everything that's happening right now in America, the killing of black men, I must say, the incessant killing of black men, this has been going on continuously and no matter, all the interventions that have been put in place is still happening. How are you dealing with all these issues that are coming up in America?
Okay, so first and foremost, yes, I'm the first African-born Muslim to be elected into any office in the state. But I was not the first to run. I am lucky to have inherited a platform that other people have run and may not have been elected. There've been some Somali brothers who ran and didn't get elected. There's a Sudanese woman who ran for school board and didn't get elected. And I got lucky and I also did a lot of work. I ran a broad-based campaign and then I got elected to the school board. And I think I'm also the first to be elected to the city council. And I also proudly say that I'm the first Ghanaian to be elected into any office in America. So I'm grateful for that.
You know, I'm happy for you, I'm happy to hear that. But it also saddens me that you are the first. Because our people have been here since the 60s or even early 50s. And nobody saw a fit to run for office. And as much as our numbers are growing, so we have some work to do and we'll be talking about that later on in the show.
Yeah, we should talk about that. That is the... I think what did work for me, or how I deal with the fact that I'm a Muslim and I am a black man, actually that will roll me into why I run for city council. It is a very difficult situation to be in. But I see myself, there is an analogy that I give, that America is an idea that keeps shaping itself every time. It keeps changing, it keeps evolving. And I am lucky to be here now. I'm lucky to be part of the process that is molding the future of America. I have received hate mails, I have received all sorts of things because of being a Muslim and being a black man. When I was running for school board, even before I started running, before I ran for office, there was a gentleman who always would email me, asking me about my loyalty to America. And when I was running for school board, he would not stop emailing me. When I got elected, he emailed every elected person in my city and probably some elected leaders in the state, saying that this guy is bringing sharia and so on and so forth. So I'm used to, I have had my own share of hate being directed at me subversively through emails or phone calls. And so I have a taste of, a tiny, tiny, tiny taste of what is it that our diaspora and cousins, which is African-Americans and other ethnic or racial minorities who are here, which is our indigenous individuals and also Latinx people and everybody else who is not white who live in this country.
Yeah.
What do I do with that? I see actually that hate and the killing of black men and everything that is going on long before I came here intensely. Now that we have a president who go out every day to make sure that he inspires people to do that, how do I deal with that? It's a difficulty. Nobody have an antidote to that. But what I do is, anytime something happens, it serves as an inspiration and motivation for me to do more. Inspire a lot of young people in our community to tell them that this is a fight that we have to do. It motivates me to look at the policies that I'm working on, to say that this is not working, let's change it. It motivates me to be bold and not be afraid during council meetings to bring forward policies that is more equitable, that says more. It motivates me to look around the country and see who else is doing some of this work, so that I will learn from them, so that we can collectively push the system to change. And that is what I am doing every day and every minute.
That's good. That's very good. And I'm glad that you mentioned during your introduction that, you know, you pay homage to the many African-Americans who sacrificed their lives and their energies and everything before, during the Jim Crow era, the civil rights era, up to now, who paved the way for us as immigrants to come and basically enjoy the fruits of their labor. Because a lot of times, we don't talk too much about that. That somehow, we came and everything was just milk and sugar. It wasn't like that. Some people have fought, a lot of African-American brothers and sisters have fought very hard to get us here. And we basically, as Africans or as African immigrants, we come because of the color of our skin, we sometimes become beneficiaries to some of the things that the laws that they passed and we're able to get through and work and be successful. But we oftentimes have to look back and see the struggles that they went through and the struggles that they are still going through. And sometimes, you know, we also experience, but we can tell that, yes, for the most part, they bear the burden more than we do, right? So I appreciate you saying that. Before I go on, I want to ask you, I mean, I think I looked at some of the policies that you focus on as a counselor, and most of it is on education. What are the platforms that you run on?
Well, I think if you, when you look, for my daytime job, I work around engagement between families who have kids in their school, who have our school system and the school system, so that by engaging the system, you change policy. I know that I cannot do the work by myself. So you have to build a community that is willing and open to engage the system, so that you do the inside-outside kind of like work to change policy. When I was running for city council, my policy, my platform was expanding engagement between the city and the people that the city represents. I also look at public transportation. I did serve on the metro board for some time. And I worked with the metro board to make sure that some of the people who operate the buses that we have in our city do reflect the residents that we have here. Currently, on the council, I serve on the legislative and appointments committee. One of the tasks is that we engage our state legislators and we also appoint people to committees and commissions that shape all of those things. And make sure that people who do not necessarily engage the system before get to know that we have openings. And I encourage people to run, which is to apply, which is immigrants and other marginalized members of our LGBTQ community members, some people who may not even think about signing up or applying to be on a city's committee or a city's commission. For example, we have the PAC Commission. The PAC Commissioners make sure that all the PACs that we are taking care of, they come up with policies and things on how does a city run its PACs, right? Or we have the ART Commission. So all of these things need to reflect the city and the residents of the city. And some of what I do is to make sure that we have people who are coming from that background, getting into those commissions to be part of the decision-making process.
Okay, okay. So now let's shift a little bit to Ghana. Personally, the current political environment is not one that I fancy. I think our political environment in Ghana has grown quite toxic. And the two main political parties, the MPP and D.C., basically are the ones to blame for it because they both have not done a good job in turning down the rhetoric and bringing down the heat. And as you know, the election times are approaching in Ghana. And when elections come, a lot of talks about violence and what's gonna happen. And even in 2020, we're still talking about Ghana becoming a war-torn country due to electoral violence, right? And it's quite shameful that instead of focusing on policies that the two parties are gonna be able to bring to a political country, the focus tends to be insults and violence. What do you see? I'm sure you follow, as a former journalist, you follow politics in Ghana. What do you see as the things going on in Ghana? What's your advice as to what we can do as a country to kind of tone down the rhetoric and really focus on policy issues and not all the other noise that comes with it?
Thank you. I will say this. When I was in Ghana, I wasn't directly involved in politics, I followed politics. And what I have realized is that a public service, sometimes when I describe myself, I don't call myself a politician, I call myself a public servant. Being in elected office is completely different here than it is back home. You know, when you run for office, there's one thing that is like a pulpit that has been given for you, to do what you believe is good for the common good of all. For the common good of this, whether it is a village, a town, a city or a country, that you went to the people who live in that jurisdiction and said to them, "I want to save you," right? And then they voted for you, right? Once they voted for you, it is not about you as an individual. It is about the people that you went to and said to them, "If you vote for me, I'm gonna represent you. I'm gonna do what is the common good of all." And once you get elected, you don't just represent the people who elected for you, you represent everyone. Yes, I know it is politics and you have opponents and your opponents will come at you, but you have to think broadly. Because if Ghana happens to be a good place, it is not good for just the people who supported you or people who are in your party or members of your party. It is good for all of us. It's good for everybody who is a shareholder of that entity called Ghana. So I can go on and on with so many things about Ghana. But one of the things that I will say is that I think those people who are in Ghana who are able and have the capabilities to educate other people, the citizenry, on we need to do a lot of civic engagement in Ghana. We need elected officials, like you said, to start talking to their base and not firing them up for a fight. Election is not a fight. Election is not a war. And we need to look at what is in the best interest of Ghana now and the future of our country. That is what is important. But getting one people or one part of Ghana against the other, we have been lucky so far. I am surprised that we haven't had any bad situations like many other African countries.
Yes.
I mean, we haven't had that and I hope, and I hope and pray every day that nothing like that should happen in Ghana. And I don't know if I can confidently say that I'm not sure if that will happen or it will not happen.
Right.
We just have to keep praying and we just have to keep working around it. Yes, when you look at, I don't want to say it that well because our neighbor's house is on fire and ours is not. Ours have only just like a little bit of a fire, so we are better. No, I'm not going to compare Ghana and other countries because when you talk to some of my friends, they say, "Waba, something is happening here somewhere. It's happening in a different Ghanaian African country, it's not happening, so we're better." No, we can do better. We can be an example for other African countries to look up to. Some are already looking up to us, let's do better. Let's make sure that politics does not divide us. It is never too late to turn around and do what is right. It is never too late to turn around and do what is right. That is, that is what I would say to that.
Thank you, thank you for that submission, that's, that's quite good. Uh, so considering uh, your vast experience in local politics, you know, because as the saying goes, all politics is local, right? Uh, do you have any future political ambitions back home?
I, I don't think so. Uh, uh, one thing that I think of back home, I mean, I believe that uh, uh, politics, leadership is like investments, right? I am fifty-one years old, uh, I left Ghana when I was thirty.
You look quite good for fifty-one.
I ate a lot of uh...
I guess the main weather is very good to you.
It's good to me, and the healthy food that we have here, everything here, uh, we have uh, fish and everything that we get.
I like the lobsters.
Yeah, so, look at uh, uh, politics, everything is local, right? Having invested that much in Ghana, uh, the past twenty, twenty years, it will be exactly twenty years uh, this month, September, when I left Ghana. I have invested here, right? Uh, if I go to Ghana, if anything at all, as I said earlier, I care about civic engagement. If I, if I ever go and do some, I will go to Ghana because that's where I am from. But if I'm gonna invest in anything around politics in Ghana, it is uh, uh, to get the citizenry to understand how to engage the people who, who lead them, not to wait until when uh, it is election, then a politician will come around with some food and his, or her picture on the food and give it to them and get your vote. Uh, the education part of it, the teaching of our people that politics is not about fighting each other. Yes, you can agree to disagree and move on, but it's about engaging that system in a different way, in a more civil way. Uh, that I am looking forward to doing that someday in Ghana.
Okay, that's excellent.
Do a lot of that, I have a fellowship that I call Civic and Community Engagement Fellows, uh, for young people who are immigrants or ethnic minorities between the age of twenty-three and uh, twenty-seven. It will be something that I wouldn't mind taking the template, and if there are somebody in Ghana who wants to do that there, for me to hand it over and say, "You can run this in Ghana as well." I, I wouldn't mind, but I, I cannot see myself running for public office in Ghana.
Well, never say never, you know, I, I wouldn't put a stop to that, because I, I'm hoping one day you change your mind, because you can do a lot of good, you know? Uh, but, you know, considering um, everything that's going on, eh, 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 you know, let me add this, because I feel like there are so many people who always wanna jump into politics, right? They just wanna hold office, they wanna hold public office, it's a great thing. But oftentimes, we have the wrong people running for office, or the wrong people running for, for the wrong reasons, right? Because back home, they wanna go in and make money, right? Over here, you, you serve in politics to, you, you know, you go in parties to serve the people. You know, when you go into parties, you are servant in America. You know, I think I was speaking to you before, and uh, the governor of Maine barely makes seventy thousand dollars a year as a salary. That's a, a whole governor of a state in America making seventy thousand dollars a year, that's a salary. And I said, "Whoa, why would anybody run for that office?" You know, and then we know why they run, because it's not about the money, it's about the position and what good they can do, right? So, uh, you know, the, the, the scenario back home is that when you go into parties, you make money. In fact, you know, the, um, I speak to a lot of people back home, and it's one thing that turns me off. You know, that when you talk to someone who's running for, they wanna run for, uh, uh, a member of parliament, they talk to you, or you say, "Okay, I see your financial situation, you, you struggling to raise money, but you still wanna go into politics." What, you borrow money to kind of get into it, and then what happens after that, right? You find a way, you have to eventually pay people back, and then you, you know, you have to do whatever you can, kulu to make money, and then pay them back. How, why do you have to run for office if that's the reason? Uh, you know, it bothers me every mu, every time that you shouldn't be running for that reason. If you're not going there just to serve, if you're going there to enrich yourself, then that's a wrong reason, you know? So I think we need to educate our people more, you know, we need to educate our people more to understand that it's a service. You know, you don't go there to lord over people. So, um, that, you know, that's my, my little spiel on that. But, um, I wanted to also ask you, what is your advice for African immigrants in America? Because as you said, you're the first Ghanaian to run for such an office, right? Uh, luckily, there've been, after you, there've been one or two people, um, that we know that are also in public office, and we looking for more, we hoping for more. Um, I interviewed uh, Kweju Asamoah Caesar, who we are very fortunate uh, that, uh, that he's running for the U S Congress. That's a huge platform, right?
Yeah.
And um, you know, we wish him all the best. Uh, in the end, I'll put some message out about what guy just doing, we just endorsed him today, and we hope people can support him financially, because he needs all our support. But um, how do we continue to get more people engaged into public and in public service? And um, how do we do that?
Well, I think uh, sometimes I say that uh, uh, I cannot speak for back, back in Ghana, but I hear, I think public service is a calling. Uh, um, uh, to many people, but not to everyone, there are people who strategically plan and position themselves. I think um, there are people that will run for office at a higher level like uh, uh, Mr. Caesar, but there are also people that will run for local office like me. Uh, and local office does not necessarily means, you don't have to be, I think let's start with getting Ghanaians who live here and other African immigrants who live here to get involved in their communities for the right reason. Let's say you live in a town, uh, the parks, the soccer parks, the basketball field that your children play at, right? It's all, somebody make a decision to find, to, to fix that. And then there is a group of people who are taking care of that. So we have the PAC commission, we have the Public Arts Commission, we have many different, the police overseeing committee. We have many different committees that are not elected office, that are not like, you don't have to run for it, you get appointed, you apply. And uh, I know that the African immigrants who live here are some of the most highly educated people in this country. We, we all know that. Uh, a lot of Africans, if you Google the most, uh, most educated immigrants, a couple of, I'm not gonna mention any specific one or two countries, but a lot of Africans are highly educated, they can get involved in the communities that you live in, that is where you begin. Because if you do it, then uh, the younger ones that are coming ahead of you, all your children will see that my parents are civically engaging the cities that they live in, they are trying to make it a better place. Because uh, I know that we all come in here and say that, "Oh, uh, yeah, Chibiya, oh, okay, me a lempa hebe and eh, I look, but I get a zona, but uh, you know, we will go back home, right? But for now, you are here."
Yes.
So why don't you make here the best that you can make it? You, you know what I'm saying? It is, this is where you live, this is our home, right? So get involved, it could be uh, um, the P T O, go to P T O meetings. I understand that um, most of us are here to work, yes, let's do the work, let's, 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 let's go after the dollars. But also, let's care about the environment in which we live in, our neighbors, uh, uh, the kids that play with our kids. Let's know what is going on in the schools that our children go to, that is where you begin. And then you inculcate, you build the idea of engaging the system, because let's talk about city council and school board and county commissioners, right? You have jails, that jail, the decision to put a jail in your town, or how the jail is run, is run by someone who ran for office in most places, right? The district attorney, who, when uh, you run the red light, whether you assure you run for it or not, the person who makes the decision whether you are going to be prosecuted at court or not, in most part of the U S are elected, right? The school board, who make decisions that affect your children. If you don't have children, you have neighbors who have children. The school board, the elected people on the school board, they are elected. The city councillors, who, who decide how much tax you pay, right? How your street is being paved, and many other things, they are all elected people. So if you don't get involved and support people who have shared values as you, someone will vote, and they will vote for the wrong people who you don't agree with, right? And anytime we, I raise my hand, when it comes to critical decision, it affects someone's life. Your everyday life, you said something which is very important, that all politics is local. Your everyday life is decided by the people who are elected in those offices. And uh, you don't have to run for office, you just have to make sure that you, you stay engaged and involved. When the right comes, if you are engaged, you are involved, when the right comes for you to run, nobody will tell you, you would know that yourself, right? But we can also intentionally get involved and find uh, uh, the science of leadership in our young people, and then give them the necessary skills building uh, 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 resources that they need. And then if they get there and they chose to run for office, but whatever it is, let's build the leadership. I don't think we lack that, we don't lack young people or people who are smart enough or who have leadership abilities. We just need to get, to stay involved, get involved and stay involved, that is what I would say.
Okay, thank you very much, I, I wanna take some time and uh, welcome some of our viewers on Facebook. Uh, we have Mr. Derek Minter from Connecticut, Aisha Kindi, Abu Bakari. Uh, we have Jitan Kadka, uh, she, she says hi, she's from Vermont, I think she, uh, you know, you may know her.
Hi.
Kwan Mawal.
Ah.
Yes, Sukina Sakina, that's a beautiful name. Um, we have Manny Marion, Mohammed, uh, Mohammed Abdurah, Rahman.
Yeah.
Esther, yeah, we have quite a lot of people here watching, and um, we just wanna say hi to them. And please, if you have any questions, feel free to send it to us, uh, our councillor will be happy to answer them for you. Uh, thank you again for joining us, uh, let's continue. So, uh, thank you for giving us, you know, um, an advice as to what Ghanaians or other Africans can do to getting, engage in our, in our, in our civic communities. I mean, we are all here, as you said, we, you know, we say, we, we come and we say we leave in tomorrow, but we, we end up staying twenty, thirty, forty years, so we're not going anywhere, even when we leave, we just, we don't just leave, we leave, we leave all our descendants here, right? So, uh, somehow, we got, we have to, you know, get them involved, so at least we're not just packing our bags and leaving, right? Because when we leave and we don't leave anything behind for them, what happens, right? So, um, I think it's, the time is right for Ghanaians and other Africans to step up, you know, and get engaged in our communities and, and, and ensure that, yes, we gonna, you know, we are part of the system, right? Uh, can you tell us, I know there is a new um, political um, action committee that's been set up in Washington D C. Um, can you tell us a little bit about that? We plan to have them on the show one of these days, but uh, maybe, you know, if somebody has a plan to run one day, um, the Ghana PAC will be able to help them, please tell us a little bit about Ghana PAC.
So I, I am not part of it, but I've talked to them, and I, I am glad to see that there are a group of Ghanaians who cares so much about us being in this country. Uh, the Ghanaian American Diaspora PAC, or Ghanaian Diaspora American Political Action PAC,
Yeah.
organization that is looking for the interests of Ghanaians who are running for office. I think they also have uh, uh, the future looking into getting Ghanaians, some of the things that I've said, who are interested to support them to get to them for, run for office. Currently, they are working to get all Ghanaians who live here to be counted in the census, uh, they are supporting. I think I saw something, there are other Ghanaians who are in office, and there are others who are running in addition to Caesar, there's about three or four other Ghanaians, one in Chicago running for state legislature, and, and others in some other part of the country that they are supporting. So if you are a Ghanaian, you're watching this, please find their website and donate some money so that they can do the work. I am happy to see that there's something that's specifically targeting Ghanaian Americans and giving the support that is, uh, that is needed.
Yes.
I also uh, know that, um, I don't know if my friends from Maine are watching, Manny Marioni was on the school board with me. I learned so much from her, Manny, if you're watching, thank you for your service, she's not running anymore. Kwan, um, uh, whatever his, Kwan is uh, uh, the former uh, chair of the Southern Sudanese community. Kwan, thank you very much, I appreciate you. Even though you're gonna give me a hard time after this, but I appreciate you. And uh, I will give a shout out to my fellow Ghanaians who are also in elected office. Uh, 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 Adrian in uh, the city of Bowie, and then City Councillor Anna Nee in New York. Uh, I, I'll give you the shout out, and then I have a lot of immigrants who are in public office here in Maine. Uh, Deka Dalak from Somalia, Claude, uh, uh, Nasir, um, um, Sophia, Marwa, uh, I hope Angela, and then many, many other immigrants are in office. I can proudly say that um, I'm grateful for my state, which is uh, state of Maine. We are one of the whitest states, but eleven um, immigrants uh, who are in elected office uh, the past few years. If we look at it by capital H, I can say, I can proudly say that we have more immigrant in elected office than any other state, and Maine should be proud of themselves.
That's excellent, that's, that's really good news.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, so now perhaps, you know, this million-dollar question.
That actually, Tae Chan, uh, he's a Korean-American.
Oh.
Tae is the first immigrant, uh, not African, he's the first immigrant to be elected into any office. He got elected to the school board about ten years ago.
Wow.
More than ten years ago, not long after I moved here. And then he did one term, and then, and then now he ran for city council last year and got elected. So Tae is one of the people who paved the way for all of us.
That's excellent, that's good. Uh, so perhaps you're not ready to share this with us yet, but something tells me that you have bigger ambitions, you know, and potentially going national some, at some point. Uh, are you ready to share with us what your future political ambitions are?
Uh, I live in a city that love me and give me the opportunity to do a lot of this. I know one thing for sure, that I will raise future uh, people who will go national. For me, I don't know, I have said this over and over, when I was on the school board, people keep saying to me, "Why don't you run for city council?" And I said, "I don't know, I'm have work to do here." And when the right, when the right time came for me to do, to run for city council, nobody told me, I just, I felt it. Uh, do I think I will run for uh, a higher office? There's many higher offices, it could be county commissioner or something, it could be state legislator, it could be many things. I, I have learned never to say never, uh, uh, never to say, never to say never.
Yeah.
Is, if, if the question is if I'm gonna go to do politics in Ghana, that one. But here, I don't know, I think, like I said, um, running for office is a calling, and uh, uh, once you do your share, I can decide tomorrow that I don't wanna be on the city council anymore, I wanna do something else and improve my community. So yeah, um, I, I, I don't know, I, I, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, that's good, so now we, we talked, you know, a little bit about what our people can do to get engaged, but can you also share with us, but some people are also looking at how can we support our people once they decide to run, right? Once they get in, uh, they decide, "Okay, now I'm finally gonna grab, you know, uh, the application and deciding, I'm gonna fill it up and say I'm gonna run for office", how do we support them? Like I mentioned, uh, there, there's something coming up that I'm gonna talk about before the end of the show, but yeah, we need to support our people, how do we do that?
Well, uh, if we live, even now, it is much easier, you can volunteer. I understand not everyone have a lot of money to give for political candidates, uh, but you can volunteer. You can knock on doors, if you live in the same town or the nearby town, and it's easy for you to drive there, you can go and put up signs for the person, you can knock on doors for the person, but most of all, donate. Uh, 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 it doesn't have to be, you don't have to have a, a thousand dollars or this thing, five dollars helps. Five dollars can make about uh, uh, one sign, or, or, or ten pound cards, the ones that we go around and give it to people. Whatever you can do, please support with money, or make phone calls. Uh, these days, it's easy, there are softwares that will allow me to sit here in Portland, Maine, and make a phone call for a candidate who is in uh, Kentucky, right? You can do that, volunteer your time, an hour out of your time, carve it out, and support people who are running for office. Uh, if you have shared value with them, it is very important, they need that. And also, once you elect someone into office, if it is in your city, please don't leave them alone. Um, uh, they have a lot of power, they make a lot of decisions, engage them, and also they need your support. Um, it's cool being lonely at the top.
Yes, you know, and on that note, um, Harrison Day just commented on Facebook that representation certainly matters. Um, as they say, if you are not at the table, you are not on the menu. So that goes exactly with what you just mentioned, you just said. So, um, another, actually, there's another question from uh, one of our viewers. Uh, Mr. Derek Minter, um, asked that, is there any advice for local Ghanaian community organizations in various states? In particular, how they expand to include all Americans and not just Ghanaians, and how to um, attract and how to attract Ghanaian youth to engage in civil service?
Well, as I said earlier, uh, as leaders in your community... Well, as I said earlier, as leaders in your community, you serve by example, right? I can say that since I got elected, as I said, many immigrants, right now, as I'm talking to you, there are two immigrants, young immigrants, running for a, a, a school board. One of them grew up, yeah, she went to school here. Ten years ago, you will not see a young immigrant saying that he running for office. But they've seen that myself and many others have run and they know what is capable. They know what is possible. So the leaders in the community, as I've said before, need to be engaged and your kids will see you being engaged and they will, they will follow you. Put your money where your mouth is. Is that a right way to say it?
Yes, put your money where your mouth is, yeah.
Young people who will be part of the system, you get involved in the system. It doesn't matter at what level, whether it is in your neighborhood association or many other ways. The Ghanaian organizations should look at it and what I'm going to say, if I, if it comes across as disrespect, I want people to forgive me. We shouldn't just be doing outdoors and funeral. We should start to look beyond that. We should start to look at how can we be part of the conversation in the cities and the communities that we live in? You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
We should, we should go beyond that, the funeral, the outdoors and the parties and do something that impact not just us, but the collective communities in which we live in. Because as both you and I agree and we've talked about this over and over, that we are here, we are not going anywhere. We must as well make it the best place that it can be.
Thank you, thank you. And let me add something to that, you know, that, you know, if we set our minds to raise money as Ghanaians, I've seen so many different facets. We are very good at raising money. We can get ten people in a room and before we know it, we raised twenty thousand dollars. It's very easy. We've seen it in our churches, at funerals, at outdoors. We can raise money. We are very good at it. So what do I say? Let's raise money towards something that's enduring, something that's good, right? Yes, we can go to our others, we go to our funerals, but let's try to reserve some of those resources and time, especially time, to doing things that are enduring, things that our children can grow up one day. So our parents did this because we spend so much time on the other things and neglect some of the most important things. So on that note, as Ghanaians, please, let's come together and support worthy courses, support worthy people who are doing great things that will come to benefit us as a community. Well, councillor, please permit me, you know, as we come to a close, that, you know, to outdoor something that the Ghanaian American Journal did today. For the first time, we officially endorse our brother Kudjua Asamoah Caesar. You know, he has been officially endorsed by the Ghanaian American Journal. We believe in his candidacy and we think he is the right man in Oklahoma's first district to represent him, especially looking at everything that's going on. We need diversity, we need representation of minorities all across America. And Kudjua has stepped up, he's done his homework, he's prepared himself and he's ready for the job. So if anybody is listening to me from Oklahoma, please, come November, vote for our brother Kudjua Asamoah Caesar. But on our part as Ghanaians, we need to do our part to support him. He needs our financial support. He's done all the work, all the logistics has been done, but he needs our financial support to do a lot of advertising, to push the message out there. So please, if you are watching us today or you've been watching us later, I'm just going to give you a website to go to, to go and show your support and love for our brother Kudjua Asamoah Caesar. Please visit his website and this is directly to his website. So when you donate, it goes directly to him. W W W dot Kudjua for F O R, kudjuaforcongress.com. So W W W dot kudjuaforcongress.com. When you go on that website, you see there's a page that says, help the Ghanaian American Journal elect first, the first Ghanaian American Member of Congress. If you click on that button, there's many options. You can donate twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars, a hundred dollars, fifty dollars, whatever you can, even ten dollars, we will accept it. Five dollars, okay? Whatever you can, for the month of September, we want to push him as far as we can because he needs, this, this is a very critical month for him to raise as much money as he can to move forward. So please visit his website and donate directly to him. We'll be watching, we'll be thanking you and we really hope that you will do that and we, we know you will. So as Ghanaians, as Africans, let's go to Kudjua's website and support him. Thank you very much. Well, my brother, I call you Brother Ali, I call you Councilman Ali. I thank you very much for joining us today. You know, continue doing the work that you're doing. And if you have any final messages for us, you know, be happy to hear because I know you have a lot of words of wisdom.
Well, as I say, let's continue to work together as, as a community. We are part of this country, you know, going anywhere. We should get involved in every aspect of this country, not just politics, every aspect of it. And Derek Minter, if you are still here, please feel free to inbox me. I am willing and open to work with you, to come up with something that will help the young people in Connecticut. Our young people that are born here deserve a community that support them to grow into useful members of our country. So please let me know, reach out to me. I will do all I can to support you from afar. So thank you very much for the people from Maine, my friends and other people who have joined us to listen to me. I really appreciate that and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Brother Ali. And, you know, let me just add that Derek Minter is a good, a big brother of mine. We've done a lot of work together in the past, we continue to do it. He's been very vital in our community here in Connecticut. He's the president of the Coo Association and does marvelous things, you know, he does. He organizes summer classes for kids. He, he does all kinds of stuff. So he's one of those guys that we need in our communities, that we need, you know, in every community because they are people who are movers and shakers. They, they go, they dedicate their time and their service for the, for, for, for the people and that's what we need. So Derek, kudos to you and continue doing what you're doing. Again, Councilman Ali, thank you very much for joining us on the Ghanaian American Journal. We will be recording, this has been recorded, we'll be showing it again later on. So if you joined us, thank you again for, for, for joining us and we hope in a couple of weeks, we'll be bringing you another show. We have somebody very special coming your way and we'll be announcing that very soon. So please stay tuned and check our Facebook feeds and you'll be seeing everything that we post out there. Again, thank you very much and thank you for watching.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.